And we'll start by welcoming some students. We have some students from Center High and Roseville High. Any other high schools in the audience? So, welcome. And we have Morgan Rogers and her mom Kathy, who works here at the city that will do, oh, we're gonna do roll call first.
Thank you.
We'll do roll call.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Sure, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert. Councilmember Haldishelt.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rukuchi.
Here.
And the record reflect that Mayor Bernice Coney's excuse from tonight's meeting.
Okay, now we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So I'm gonna ask Kathy and, or Morgan and her mom Kathy to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Sorry. I'm new. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll now ask the city clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Great. Good evening and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the audience should be directed to our city council and not to any staff members or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. Members of the public may address the city council regarding any item that is not listed on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes and each speaker will have three minutes. If the time limitation is reached in the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit our city council from discussing, debating, or taking action on matters that are not listed on the agenda. Items appearing on the agenda, the Brown Act allows for public comment on all items that are listed on tonight's agenda. The speaker will have five minutes to provide input and should be relevant to the item that is listed. Time will be monitored and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we ask that the speaker please conclude their comments. The city council encourages public participation and requests that you be, please be courteous during the meeting. Lastly, if addressing the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, welcome to the City of Roseville.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start with public comments for items that are not listed on the agenda. I have two people who have turned in forms. If there's anyone else that wants to speak, we'll start with the two that I have here. So Luca, you're first.
Good evening, members of the council and fellow residents. One second. So I apologize if my words lack eloquence or sense. I'm an old combat vet and no Bill Shakespeare. That said, I did borrow a lot from Charlie Chaplin. I stand before you not as a politician or a ruler, but as a fellow human being who believes in American values of truth, liberty, and freedom. Like many of you, I want to help others, the sick, the elderly, the vulnerable, the fatherless, everyone. I believe most people want to help each other. After all, human beings are meant for fellowship, not for subjugation or domination. Therefore, we ought to live by each other's happiness and not by each other's misery or destruction. But greed has poisoned our nation's souls. It has barricaded us with hate and gusted us into this present misery. As a veteran, I fought for this country, enduring unyielding chronic pain, cancer, a traumatic brain injury, multiple lifetimes worth of bad memories, and a truncated life expectancy. I accepted these sacrifices because I believe in a nation that cares for its people, a nation where the sick, the elderly, and the least among us are protected. But today, the rights we fought for are all under threat. These are not just policies, they are promises, and promises must not be broken. We are told to work longer hours. In fact, Musk advocates for a 120-hour work week. In human, this would give us six hours and 52 minutes off a day of a seven-day work week. They want us to sacrifice our rest, family, self-development, and community while simultaneously robbing us of the wealth that we all create. But I say to you, we're not machines or cattle. We are human beings with the love of God in our hearts. Therefore, we must not give ourselves to those who would enslave us, who would regiment our lives to tell us what to think, what to do, or what to feel. We must fight for liberty civilly, for a world where our collaboration leads to happiness for all. Dictators free themselves, but they enslave the people. But the power to create a free and beautiful life lies within all of us, the people. So the name of democracy, let us use that power. Let us unite to fight for a world that gives youth a future and old age a security and every person dignity. Let us fight to free the world and do away with greed, hate, and intolerance. Let us fight for a world of compassion, reason, and equity. My faith tells me to kneel for one king only, and it's not President Trump, and it's certainly not Elon Musk. So please act, join organizations, attend civil protest, and vote these anti-American greedy madmen out. And speak up to put pressure on Kevin Keighley, Alex Padilla, Adam Schiff, and Gavin Newsom to tell them to defend the Constitution and us, the people. For the good of the world and our children, we cannot let liberty and freedom be ripped away from us. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you Luca. Amelia, you're next.
My words are gonna be a lot shorter. Good evening, council. Thanks to President Trump and Doge, we now know what Republicans mean when they say fiscal responsibility, slashing public service spending to finance tax cuts for property owners, developers, and government contractors. Doesn't the mayor own a PR company that holds contracts with the city? Councilmember Household, weren't you a lobbyist for property developers in the 90s? I wonder how many business owners sit on this council? Have a good night.
Thank you Amelia. Are there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move to the consent calendar. I'd like to request the city clerk announce the procedures for the consent calendar.
Thank you. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, staff, or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there any member of the public that would like to request an item be pulled for further discussion tonight from consent? Okay, seeing none Vice Mayor.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
Thank you. The city council will consider consent calendar items 6.1 through 6.16. We do have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Haldishelt with a second by Councilmember Rukuchi. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rukuchi.
Yes.
Thank you. All matters passed and have been approved.
Okay, so we do have a discretionary fund request for the council. Inquire if anyone has any questions.
Let me read the presentation on discretionary funds, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much. So at this time, we did require, we did receive a request for $5,000 in discretionary funds that was received from the Westbrook Elementary Parent Teacher Club for a platinum sponsorship to support their first comedy night out fundraiser, to provide science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, or STEAM, enrichment opportunities for students in the greater Roseville area. Tonight, we do have Mr. Benjamin Clyde from the Westbrook Parent Teacher Club present to answer any questions the council may have. That concludes my presentation.
Vice Mayor Albert, can, can we have our city clerk go through the balance and the projected expenditures for this fund through, I think we're through July 1st of this year? So we know what the balance is we have to work with and what might be future obligations that will come before us?
So currently, there is a balance of $10,321. In the past, we have had other requests for sponsorship, one of them being the Fourth of July Parade. And there is one other, I wanna say the Turkey Trot, and I don't recall if there's one other that we've come to.
We usually get one from Crime Stoppers.
Crime Stoppers, thank you.
And does that, and I apologize, I don't have the sheet in front of me, but I think we get from each of the high schools a request for sober grad night as well.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes, we do.
Come off the $10,000, right?
Yes.
Coming up in a couple months.
Right, and so that would be probably a couple thousand that would come off of the $10,000 if I remember correctly. Cause we usually give 500 to each of the four high schools, so.
Has been the past amount for, for the high schools, correct?
Thank you. Oh, 500, so 2,500. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Council comments?
Do we wanna have the applicant?
Yeah. Applicant come up and speak. Mr. Clyde?
Welcome.
Thank you guys for your time, council members. My name is Benjamin with Westbrook PTC. We're here with Megan and Whitney. Whitney's also with Westbrook. And Megan, you guys are familiar with, with Roseville Theater Arts Academy. We really stand in front of you today really as dedicated community members advancing youth enrichment opportunities. You're familiar with RTA and their advancements with STEM, live performing arts. We have a similar agenda to making resources available for the youth at Westbrook Elementary, but we really came together in this innovative way where we could impact adults across the Roseville area with a fun entertainment night for a worthy cause. So sponsors that are coming on board will get to support two nonprofits that are really focused on inspiring the next generation of STEM leaders. And then obviously like a fun night for the parents, right? But they're doing it for a good cause. So two nonprofits. And then Megan, I don't know if you wanna say a few things?
Sure. Megan White with Roseville Theater Arts Academy. I was really excited when Westbrook came to ask about partnering in the fundraiser. RTA is really passionate about working with children, and we partner with a lot of local schools. We have a partnership with Boljón Elementary School. We have one with Wood Creek High School. And we haven't really had an official partnership with any elementary school, so I was really excited when they asked if we could come together to do this. A comedy night for parents, I'm a parent of two young kids, so I can appreciate a night out with my husband, but especially because the money going into this is really gonna go right back out to the students. I'm grateful that they allow me to be part of that fundraising, so we can pour that back into our students as well, our workshop scholarships, and all of what they'll use for the kids and for STEAM there too. I think it's gonna be such a wonderful event and would love to see it continue on for years to come as an annual fundraiser. And yeah, I would urge you to join us to support the kids.
And I will say, we're looking for cost efficiencies. So the sponsorships we receive this year, we're looking to make sure that we're investing that in a way that allows to fuel future events over the next three to five years. So we're not looking at a one-off and just trying to make sure that we're being cognizant of the partners that are coming on, so they get the true value of the relationship and impact of the youth, so.
Yes.
Oh, and lastly, we are partnering from a promotional standpoint with RONCA, the Roseville Neighborhood Association. Because this is available for all adults across Roseville, they've been very welcoming to help promote this event and making it accessible to their distribution of over 20,000 families that they have that are following them on Facebook and other social channels.
Does council have any question?
Yeah, go ahead. No, go, go.
So I see this is your first annual. Congratulations on not picking something super simple for your first fundraiser. So I see your collaborative fundraising effort goal is 20,000. What have you raised so far?
I don't, I don't think that's our.
Cause I see on the introduction and goals, as a collaborative fundraising effort between RTAA and Westbrook, the goal is to raise 20,000?
I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so bulk of it will be based on promotions, so that ticket sale goes directly back into supporting RTA's nonprofit mission. And the sponsorships will benefit Westbrook Elementary. And so we've raised 1,000 so far on the sponsorship front. There's other kind of mechanisms that we're gonna tap into, like a drink ticket, and 100% of those proceeds will go towards benefiting our cause as well.
Okay. And then the other thing that I was a little worried about is I looked at the flyer and I looked through the packet that we got, all of us council members received, excuse me. And I see on the sample order of events at 7:00 PM after the social and prior to the conversation close at 9:00. The main act obviously is a 40-minute comedy show. Who are you working with or what, what is, who is going to be doing the comedy?
Yeah, that's fair.
Obviously, as a city, putting our name and our logo on there, we wanna be mindful.
No, absolutely. Well, we're excited to share with you. That was a sample. We have the updated flyer too, so we can send that to Ms. Blanco and hopefully she can distribute it. But we're working with someone, a comedian that the city's worked with in the past, so Mike Winfield. And he, he's been seen on.
Yeah, he, he was a headliner too with the City of Roseville's Comedy Night a few years ago, so.
Fully vetted. He's been on The Late Show with David Letterman. He's been, he has a special on Netflix, BET, as well as America's Got Talent. He was a finalist. So he's an established comedian. And he's actually, because he knows this is our first-year event, he's also donating a portion of his time. So we're just happy.
So will he be the full 40 or will he be the other additional besides him?
He's 40, and then we have a 20-minute opener. And his name is Paul Conyers.
Are you aware, have we, we've worked with Paul before? I know we've worked with Mike Winfield, so that, that helps me a little to know that the style of comedy, you know, we, but, okay.
Yeah, the theme too, we vetted the comedians. We wanted to make sure it could be family-friendly and that they have a storyline around, you know, life events for a parent, so.
So somebody is doing some sort of a review of the sample sketch that they'll be doing, materials?
It had to get vetted by the board, so.
Make sure it's relatable for all of us.
Yeah.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Haldishelt?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for being on the PTC. For 10 years, I was on a charter academy board and, you know, you give up a lot of nights and you have a lot of complex decisions to make. And, and teachers versus parents and the school schedule's always, you know, always one of the challenging things. People want more, other people want less. So thank you for your volunteerism. Let me understand, you've raised 1,000. You need how much?
5,000 will allow us to sustain this for the next three years. A lot of the expenses will be signage, will be talent, and then a portion of, let's say that 5,000, if we're focusing on that, will then go into supporting the STEM enrichment efforts.
So 6,000 will cover the event for three years? Is that what I'm understanding?
We, it will cover the signage that we can roll over with other sponsors' logos on it. And then it will also support us to have talent for this year's event. And then to one of the council members earlier point, without having talent there, we're not able to really raise any fundraising efforts at the door, you know, with tickets and.
Sure. And what other fundraising, what is your other, your, your capital campaign?
We have, the mechanisms we have in place are the drink ticket. We have donations from Safeway for soft drinks. This is like bootstrap, so we're getting donations from everywhere. And we just wanna make sure that the presentation in year one is successful. Having the City of Roseville, there's a halo effect to that when you guys are involved. And so it's easier to go to like the auto mall. They're, oh, City of Roseville's involved. But also just from a longevity standpoint, next year, we can say, City of Roseville supported this event. It's an easier conversation to have with a corporate sponsor. And so that's kinda what we're hoping to gain too as well.
So have you?
And I apologize, drink tickets, there's a silent auction. We're also, some of the kids at the school through our docent program are creating paintwork that will be in the silent auction. So we're making sure that the core of the mission is still represented throughout the night.
Are we using this as a moment for a lot of local businesses to shine as well? So we're contacting a lot of businesses over on our side, West Park area, to see if they'd be interested in donating silent auction items. And a lot have been very excited about this opportunity. So a lot are jumping in.
And I wanna build off of that, because within your student body, there are, there are parents who have businesses or work for companies that might have an education connection or have the STEM connection that may contribute to, to this. And so that's what I wanted to hear, how you were gonna harvest, tap into, into your student families for funding. Cause I, we, I'll just be, we can't do 5,000. I'll just be upfront, right? That's a huge, that's a huge. So I wanted to hear the whole capital campaign in your mind.
Yeah, I think we're just excited to be here and present this to you. This is year one event. I mean, if we can have any volunteer from the city, I think that's a slam dunk for us in year one. And something that we can take in our next conversation to the local businesses. It almost validates the event with your involvement.
Okay, those are my questions.
Just add, just one that you, that was discussed earlier. Like Mike Winfield, he's done other things and you're familiar with him. And you said Paul Connors will start off the program. And have you seen him before or what he does or heard about him, you know?
He's, he's an up, up and coming comedian. He's on contract. He does a lot of Family Cruise shows, so he's on there. He fits that family theme. He's from Sacramento. And I can't remember who he's signed with, but he is signed with an agency that helps book, he's performed at Punchline here in Sacramento as well.
And it sounds like what you're looking for with him is he's doing a family kind of program?
Yeah, family. And really just to warm up Mike. We didn't want Mike just to jump in. We wanna start with the opener and then go to intermission so people can go back out, get some drinks, look at our silent auction area, use the restroom, and then come back in for the, the featured show, the headliner.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have one follow-up question. You said, you mentioned Arcona. Is Arcona sponsoring this or are you just working with them?
Are they a financial sponsor?
Are they contributing financially?
Roseville Coalition.
Oh, we are in conversations with them to actually make, put their logo in some of the, the promotion, like the event flyer on the website, so.
But no discussion of monetary from them?
They're not gonna do that, yeah.
Just trying to, in my head, I'm trying to figure out how to get you where you need to be, cause we can't obviously do the five.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, they said they wanna be able to support cause they're a nonprofit as well.
So they're gonna support you through advertising and, and social media?
Yeah, in kind, yeah.
I didn't hear you say ticket sales, but I think you do have ticket sales also. Is that going towards the Westbrook School or is that for the theater that's covering that?
We were, like I said, we were really innovative on how we approach this and how we can have the biggest impact. And so Megan was kind enough to open up her venue and we're just happy that we can contribute to her mission as well. Many of our students are going to the field trips there and her benefiting from the programs. And so ticket sales will benefit RTA's mission.
I saw it advertised, and I've been to comedy shows and other shows at the theater. So it, it sounds like a great, a great evening and a nice, a nice, I actually think it's on my calendar, so.
Oh, good.
Oh, yay.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Normally, when we do our comedy nights with the city, we do charge a rental fee. So this is, we are kind of sharing the spotlight with this event really. So it benefits both of us there.
And we're happy with that, yeah, yeah. Like I said, we're standing in front of you as not only parents, but community leaders that just wanna impact the city and the city's youth.
Okay, well, thank you for being here and for, you know, doing something good for our kids in the community. With, with that, any other questions before I open it up to public comment? And I would concur with the rest of you that that amount just isn't, you know, isn't within our budget.
Yeah, no, totally understandable. It's our first year, so I think we're also learning too.
And welcome, great idea. Also, please.
You know what, you need to ask, cause you know, you're not gonna get more than what you ask for. So I can appreciate that as, as a former fundraiser. So I will open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, so that, I'm gonna close public comment. So we, what I.
Just add one thing too. Mike has agreed to do some new segments too, to help promote the event. So we're excited about just his investment, even though, you know, we're not meeting his contribution. So I think he believes in the event and we're just excited to continue to shake hands with other people that, that wanna see it successful.
So Vice Mayor, you know, last year, we made a unique contribution to Caseburg Elementary because they were the only, the second elementary in, in Roseville to be recognized as a blue-ribbon school. And we did that at 1,500. So when I make the motion for 500, I wanna make that in the context of, you know, that's pretty high, that 1,500. So I, I'm prepared to make a motion for $500 as a contribution to the Westbrook Elementary Parent Comedy Night Out.
Do we have a second?
You said it left us with 2,500? If all the other ones that we're proposing come through?
We have 10,300.
No, but after the ones we're anticipating.
I, I still calculated about 8,000 after that.
Eight after that?
If I may, Madam Vice Mayor, just remember that we do have an allocation of $15,000 on July 1st within fiscal year. So this 10,000 is up until June 30th. So I don't know if that helps you in making.
Yeah, just my concern is that, you know, we've got all those schools for the grad nights that will be six. that will be 60 days before the allocation hits in July. I'm not worried about the end-of-the-year stuff, because the allo, new allocation will fund that.
If we do 2,500 for silver grad nights and 500, that's 3,000 off of the 10,000, so that's 7,000. I think we're going to get some other requests between now and then.
Right.
I'm surprised PC, Placer SPCA hasn't made a request yet, but.
It's coming.
So, anyway.
Do we have another amount that someone would like to bring forward?
And if helpful to you, we're happy to put an impact report together that shows, um, how this is benefiting not only one school, but all the elementary schools, uh, in, in Roseville too, so.
No, I, I was thinking 500 or 1,000, so I will second your motion for 500.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Haldishel with a second by Vice Mayor. Alverd for $500. Do you want me to read the motion?
Yes, please.
So at this time, on item 7.1, the City Council will consider approving a request for $500 for, from council discretionary funds for the Westbrook Elementary Parent Teacher Club for their first Parents Comedy Night Out fundraiser. May I please, um?
Should we ask to have that part of it?
It's not going to make a difference.
Yes, please do roll call.
Thank you. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Awesome. Thank you. This is going to go a long way, and we're going to make sure that we follow up with the recap, so you can see the value, and we're just going to keep growing this.
We will take you up on that impact report, because if you're going to have it the same time every year, we're going to have the same discussion every year, because you're hitting us right in the middle. Beginning of the calendar year, we're into our fiscal year, and then we're, we're in between all the graduating stuff, so it would be nice to look at what, how this year went, so that we could.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, and I wish you good luck, and, and, uh, what is the date again?
April 11th.
April 11th, okay.
Yes, right down the street, so.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So good luck with your event. Okay, we're going to move to staff presentation.
Item 8.1, we'll move on to item 8.1.
We're going to move to 8.1, and I'd like to invite our staff up here to make a presentation.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Alverd and members of the council. My name is Stephanie Keeman. I am your Assistant Public Works Director, and I'm pleased to bring before you tonight a request to accept the Roseville Parkway Extension Project as complete and begin the warranty period for the improvements. Joining me to share the details of the project is Senior Engineer Jesse Catcar, who acted as the project manager for this bridge from design through completion of its construction. Jesse?
Thank you, Stephanie. Before we dive into the details of the request for council tonight, I thought, I would like to highlight some of the benefits of the project. The completed project provides residents a new four-lane east-west connection between fast-growing western portions of Roseville to jobs, retail centers, and freeway connections in the north-central area of the city. A 10-foot-wide multi-use path for cyclists and pedestrians that is separated from vehicle travelway by a concrete barrier, which provides for a low-stress, family-friendly environment. It is also a visually appealing structure with stacked stone texture and oak leaf motif visible from Industrial Boulevard. It also, uh, has green striping elements for bike lane conflict zones, and it utilizes concrete pavement for the roadway as well as the multi-use path, which should reduce the need for future maintenance, illustrating the city's commitment to constructing enduring infrastructure. Our early reviews of traffic count data in the three weeks the bridge has been open shows that approximately 1,000 vehicles are using this route during the PM peak hour. And those, of course, are vehicles that are being removed from other east-west connections, such as Blue Oaks and Pleasant Grove Boulevard. We've also heard directly from a number of residents who are excited about the multi-use path and crossing the railroad tracks and Industrial Boulevard, an alternative to other crossings that would require traveling in bike lanes or on sidewalks adjacent to vehicles. Overall, the project was completed ahead of schedule and under budget. Some things that helped achieve these outcomes were partnerships with local developers to secure soil nearby the project, reducing transportation costs and impacts to adjacent roadways. This partnership removed approximately 7,000 loaded dump trucks from traveling on city streets. Um, it, the project also utilized precast concrete girders, reducing construction durations, um, specifically over the Union Pacific Railroad. It also is singular mission for all involved with the project to work together to achieve the best possible outcomes when challenges inevitably arose. The total construction budget for this project was 27 million, awarded by council at the September 6, 2023 meeting. And we're pleased to be able to share that a remaining balance of approximately 2 million will be returned to the city's Traffic Mitigation Fee Fund to be used for future mitigation projects. One such future traffic mitigation project, and consequently another unique reason the Roseville Parkway Extension Project, Project's completion is so beneficial, is that the city is actively working on the next important east-west widening and bridge project. The Blue Oaks Boulevard and roadway widening project is currently in design. This project will widen Blue Oaks Boulevard from Highway 65 to Wood Creek Oaks Boulevard to its ultimate configuration of eight lanes, which requires a new four-lane bridge over the railroad tracks and industrial avenue, parallel to tonight's subject bridge. Completion of the Roseville Parkway Extension Project will play a vital role in providing residents with an alternative route during construction of that project, which is anticipated to begin in 2027. With that, I will hand it back to Stephanie to go over staff recommendations.
Thank you, Jesse. So tonight, staff is recommending that the council accept the Roseville Parkway Extension Project as complete and adopt a resolution authorizing our public works director to execute the notice of completion. If council approves of these actions, the warranty period for the improvements will begin, and staff will ensure that any deficiencies brought to light over the next 12 months are corrected by the project's contractor. And that concludes our presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'll open it up for council questions of the presentation.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Um, I know we've put it in our, we broadcast it out through newsletters and other things like that. Have we partnered with businesses on the west end in that, that nugget shopping center at Campus Oaks to create awareness that?
Other than our city outreach, uh, you know, Facebook, as you mentioned, different, uh, means of getting things out there, I'm not aware of any coordination directly with business owners on that side.
I, I mean, I live nearby, and we took a walk over the weekend, and, and, uh, my wife said, "You mean, I can go to that nugget this way versus the other highly congested, very dangerous, weaving and bobbing off of 65?" I said, "Yes, you can," so. The other question you may not know, and I'll look to the city manager. Um, so on the Blue Oaks portion of it, there was $3.2 million in federal funding. Have we received that?
Yes.
As part of, okay.
Has been allocated, and we will bring it to a future council meeting to be budgeted, uh, as revenue into the project.
That's great. With everything going on, um, back east, uh, didn't want to lose that, so, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
No? I would just say, uh, I think most of us were out for the, the ribbon cutting, and congratulations on a project really well done. I know that a lot of the community is very excited, myself included, with that, that bike path and that connector, um, from Blue Oaks over to Washington, so thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight to share with the community.
You know, so. Maybe a comment, just, you know, we went, we did like, um, Vice Mayor Alver just mentioned that we went on it, but I think what it really brings to mind is if you're in an emergency, something you need, you're going to get across. You know, you don't have to get on the freeway and maybe sit on the freeway, and may, and maybe you're on ambulance, you know? Um, it's just a, a, a secure feeling that there is an, another way out, and maybe even faster. And then for us regular people who are just trying to go across town, it's really good too. But it just, um, offers opportunities, uh, to go different ways and, um, and not be congested traffic, so thank you.
Okay, so I'll open it to public comment on this presentation. Anybody want to speak? Come on up.
Uh, please state the name of your high school.
Um, I'm with, uh, my name's Kevin Cantwell. Um, question for Jesse on the, uh, project. Um, do you have a concern on the bike path being the, just a concrete barrier if there are accidents, um, versus a channelizer system?
So we did study that in design, is the okay by answer? Um, and it is skewed appropriately, so that, uh, no, we have no concerns with it.
Okay, perfect. That's all.
Any other public comments on this matter? Okay, so I'll close public comment. inquire if the council has any additional questions, comments?
Did, but I forgot it.
So I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. On item 8.1, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 25049, accepting the public works, uh, known as the Roseville Parkway Extension Project, approving the notice of completion, and authorizing the public works director to execute it, uh, execute said notice on behalf of the City of Roseville. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item 9, which is our council reports and public comments. So at this time, I will open up for second public comment. I'm not seeing any. I will close the second public comment. And, uh, city manager or city attorney, do we have any other reports?
I have nothing, thank you.
No further reports, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
So let's go ahead and, uh, start with Councilmember Rakuchi.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, yes, I actually, uh, came back from this afternoon to come to our meeting here from a legislative and regulatory meeting with Northern California Power Association, which we're a part of it, and we buy and sell, um, electricity and, uh, worked for the, uh, making sure that we actually give electricity to Roseville and how, we can help actually, uh, to help a state of California. But what we did today is go over legislation of, uh, current things that are happening on a state and federal level, and kind of getting updated of what's happening, and, and looking forward to meeting in, uh, Washington DC on particular items that, on, um, hydroelectric, uh, projects that we're working on. And, um, that's my only one today. This week, it's, we'll have others I'll talk about next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
No reports.
Councilmember Haldishel?
Yeah, but thank you, Vice Mayor Alverd. Um, so as a, uh, last week, we had our Western Placer Waste Management Authority meeting. Uh, at that meeting, we approved, uh, a contract with Sierra College for the, I cannot get this acronym right, but it is the Joint Train, Public Safety Training Center. That'll be located across from, uh, the, uh, the, the material recoveries facility. Um, today I had a meeting, uh, with the Capitol Court of Joint Powers Authority, Placer County Transportation Planning Agency rotates into the chair, so I chaired that meeting. We had our meeting in Oakland. We had a preview of all the capital projects, all the improvements to the, um, to the, uh, commuter rail that is happening. It is a board that's made up of not only Placer Eldorado, Yolo Transportation, uh, San, uh, Valley Transportation, but bar board members. It's clear, and, um, that these projects take a long time. And in unsettling, uh, uh, financial times, uh, like we're experiencing, or experiencing with every change in, uh, in, uh, federal administration, uh, we're diligently looking at something like the Third Track, which is scheduled to, uh, expand from one, uh, round trip to the Bay Area to Sacramento, and then on to the Bay Area to three, and now 2029, um, and is increasing in cost. And that's what I also wanted to mention about the East Roseville Parkway. When I got on the council six years ago, that was the first decision I had to make between Blue Oaks and the East Roseville Parkway. These projects are complicated, um, they're often delayed, and, and facilitated through our city attorney's office, who has to work on right-of-way or utility easements and other things like that. So these things are what I often refer to as overnight successes, a quarter century in the making. This one only six years. And then tomorrow, the Sacramento, the Council of Governments Board of Directors will be meeting, and we'll talk a lot about, a lot of transportation issues and what's happening in Wash, Washington DC, and what might imperil those, so thank you.
Thank you. So similar theme, I sit on the Placer County Air Pollution Board, and, uh, like I heard from my colleagues up here, we're looking at, uh, federal, you know, things happening at the federal level and how that might impact at the local level some of the, um, compliance that we have and the direction that we're headed for, you know, for good air quality in the region. So, um, other than that, it was mostly just kind of reporting and a lot of, a lot of kind of waiting to see how that, how that comes down. Um, I will also like to let the public know that next Monday and Tuesday, the council will be having their annual strategic planning meetings at, I believe, Riley, Martha Riley?
Yes, that's what I saw.
And so, uh, you know, the public is invited to come out. It starts at 1:30 on Monday, and then, uh, goes through the afternoon, and then picks back up at 8:30 on Tuesday morning till midday, so.
Starts at 9:00?
Oh, 9:00, 9 o'clock, sorry. I'll be there early, apparently. Always better to be early than late, right? Uh, but that's all that I have. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Our next meeting is March 5, so we'll see some of you back here in a couple of weeks.